Again, a warm welcome to all of you who've joined us this afternoon. Beautiful afternoon, I think wherever we are. And great pleasure to introduce our dynamic editor of transactions who's based, as you all know, in the University of Manchester. Specialist in the history of town planning. And he's going to talk to us today about the development of municipal housing in Liverpool as it shifted from an experimental phase into a sustained policy. So over to you, Bertie, and we look forward to your lecture.
Thank you very much, Roger, and thank you to everybody else. I will start with an apology, which of course I shouldn't be doing. There are far too many slides. I know that one student is in the audience. This will not surprise him, the overload of slides. What I thought I would try to do this afternoon, slightly changing what was advertised, is to give a little bit of an overview as to how the initial policy began. Whizz through the first sort of experiment, which tends to be the part that traditional histories deal with. And then take us through a selection of examples of what the council does in the immediate pre-war period. There tends to be, he says, a myth that council housing in this country begins in 1918 with the Addison Act, Lloyd George knew my father, father knew Lloyd George, Holmes fit for heroes and so on. And though it is clearly the case that compulsory council housing did indeed begin with the Addison Act. The reality is that actually the first municipal housing in the country was Liverpool, a global pioneer in 1869. We don't actually know nationally how many houses were built by authorities before 1918. There's no national register. All we can actually do is go through the individual records of circa fourteen hundred local building authorities and put them together. To date, I've never actually seen a database with all of that. But Liverpool is a global pioneer. It is undoubtedly a world leader in terms of the volume of housing. There are significant problems with what it actually provides and what it can't provide. Some of which we might say to a certain extent still exist today. I'm going to whizz through the first four or five slides, which is more sort of just context reminder that what Liverpool does in this period can be seen not only as revolutionary for eventual social housing, but also as the foundations for town planning as well, which is obviously my discipline now, or at least the discipline I'm paid for. We know, of course, that Liverpool has exponential growth through the nineteenth century. I don't need to repeat the usual discussions of urban expansion and the problems of slum dwellings that that creates. But we know that by the middle of nineteenth century, Liverpool is the single most congested town but city centre of just for ease, I will call it the city throughout the period. Huge amount of cellar dwelling and of course typical of poor law commissioners sanitary condition of the town reports in that period. A patient lying on a heap of straw in the corner of one cellar, whilst in the opposite corner of the room, a donkey was comfortably established. It almost reads as a scene out of Blackadder, but unfortunately this is very true of the period. Immediately under the windowsill was the dung hill which the donkey was employed to assist in gathering from the street. Collated from the street, a family lived in the cellar, contentedly cheek by chow with a putrefying mass. We know all of this, I don't want to repeat those arguments. But I think it is worth pointing out, which we tend to forget, that Liverpool in this period is the second city of empire, but one which arguably, well, not only profited from the slave trade, but arguably had to an extent, in the wording here, a sort of slavery of its own people, had a population density within the inner city wards. And I'm talking for those who know the geography of it, effectively Brunswick Dock up to where the hospital was and to Scotland Ward in this period of a density of about a hundred thousand per acre in certain places, which when you consider that London was twenty seven thousand and is always seen as the crowded smoggy metropolis with a huge overcrowding and slum problem, it gives you some point. Point of Liverpool's overcrowding situation is four times as worse. And as the Liverpool Health of the Town Association advocate, a small pamphlet published nine times between eighteen forty six and eighteen forty nine, packing humans together as if they were cotton veils. The highest possible price has been screwed out of building land. No change there, one might argue for today. So that our poorer streets are mere narrow lanes without proper light or ventilation. We cannot afford to have open spaces where they are most needed. And of course, we're aware of the dark dingy satanic mill sort of side in that period. Beyond housing, but it's where arguably the housing debate begins and where town planning begins, is out of concern for health. And without wanting to go down that line, as I said, I would go through the first few slides very, very quickly, just to set a context. Is that Liverpool is a global health and bracket town planning pioneer. The first modern building act for the entire country is the eighteen forty two Liverpool Building Act. It establishes a minimum width of streets. Court dwellings, not going to go into them, must now have a fifteen foot entrance way. But it's reduced to six foot if a toilet is right next door to be opening. Pleasant on an afternoon such as this. There is no requirement for those toilets to be linked to the main drains. That would actually take another four years, but at least there is some minimal standard for new developments. Cellar dwellings in eighteen forty four are banned in that no more can be built for habitation. Brilliant idea, but of course a law of unintended consequences. But unless you have alternative accommodation to put people into, if you suddenly condemn and close housing, you merely create greater overcrowding within them. And from the point of view of we desperately need more affordable housing, brackets eighteen forty two, not today, though of course the same is still true. In eighteen sixty three, twenty years later or so, still over two thousand courts remained, eighteen and a half thousand homes within them. And we tend to think of a density of population of at least five to six to a room. That act is Liverpool based, it becomes a template for ones around the nation, but of course there is no mandatory element to it. Four years later, Liverpool Sanitary Act, no courts can be higher than thirty foot. Are beginning to get an idea of more ventilation and mid-rise dwellings. Internal dimensions, maximum of eight houses, entrances to be the same width as the courts themselves, I've got a couple of pictures in a second. And then in eighteen sixty four, as Martin Dalton comments, all new courts to have a public high width at either end, unless they have a minimum width of twenty five foot through their whole length. What this effectively does is it gets rid of court housing. Because the cost of building the housing, one in an enclosed court with a maximum width of twenty five feet, I can't phrase it better than Martin does, could contain no more than eighteen houses and it was possible to erect twenty three in a street with a width of thirty feet. It's actually cheaper to build streets rather than court housing. Three acts, fifteen, twenty, twenty five years before the period I want to talk about. But it sets the tone of Liverpool pioneering in health, being aware that the overcrowding situation we know of all UK urban cities in this period is particularly acute in the city. And of course, things get worse. The supply consequences in a private sector, not only dominated but total building period, is that we see that between eighteen forty two and eighteen sixty four, the total number of houses continues to go up. But what would be seen as the cheaper houses with a rent that might, when subdivided, be suitable for, to use the nineteenth century terminology, the deserving working poor as opposed to the undeserving poor, who were an element of the working class that were actually never dealt with in this period for housing, is such. My apologies, that's the London train going past. Is of course that as you increase the quality of housing required, the builders suddenly turn around and say, well, we can't actually build to that number, we can't rent them out sufficiently. Supply goes down with the knock on consequence once again of further overcrowding. And we see that a high watermark of a thousand houses built with a rent of under twelve pounds per year subdivided, that's roughly two shillings a week for a room, down to zero by eighteen sixty five and sixty six, at a time when the city's population is exploding. We know, of course, three hundred thousand Irish immigrants land just in June eighteen forty seven, sixty to eighty thousand within the poorer quarters of a town, worsening overcrowding, worsening degradation, filth, disease, squalor. We know obviously of Duncan as the city and indeed the country's first medical officer of health in this period. But that prohibition of cellar dwelling, an increase in standards, a declining stock of cheap houses just makes an already lamentable situation worse. Great idea, lack of joined up thinking in that if you suddenly say that one form or the cheapest form of dwelling is to be made effectively illegal and prohibited, where do the people go? Faced with chronic pauperism, faced with a death rate in which the upper middle classes in Liverpool were dying five years younger than their peers in London, creates an internal political dynamic to say that something must be done. Council Jeffries argues that there is a need, let's have an experiment, let's see if it works. We don't want to build social housing, we do not want to intervene in the makings and workings of the private sector. But let's see if we do an experiment, what could happen? Let's build as a one off, some model dwellings as a guide with the private sector could actually follow. And that's in the council minutes, particularly inspired by the fear that if Liverpool's population doesn't become healthier, then in the battle for sort of civic boosterism, the hierarchical argument of John Beckett, a time of towns actively competing against each other for internal internal investment from trades and industry as opposed to government saying this is an area to be levelled up and taking a centralised approach. But unless Liverpool can do something to improve the health and wellbeing of its people, it will start to fall behind. It's suggested in council that if you provide a model for the private sector to follow, ultimately it will increase business opportunities for private buildings. And of course, therefore enrich the city. And the result of that, and this is where the lecture should really have begun, is that in eighteen sixty nine Liverpool constructs a world's first, a world's first municipal social housing for the working class. Six buildings on Blenheim Street to the north of Scotland Road. Open landings, relatively basic, very much barrack like, no concerns to the street scene, nothing of the facilities we'd expect today. Children playing out in the street, but nevertheless, a huge step forward. For those of you who know where it is, that's the corner where it is, there's a playground there now. The council build a hundred and thirty six flats. They actually ignore their own bylaws in so doing. It's a court formation, it shouldn't be a court formation, it should be open at both ends, but they cram more houses in. The quality of build is such that within the first two years, they have to decommission twelve of the flats because they're cellars with damp. And you couldn't live in them anyway after Liverpool had an outlawed cellar dwelling twenty years earlier. But these small failures of a council to follow its own regulations are sort of asides to it. Commenting at the time on the quality of this, the builder, that well-known source for planning historians, argues that in the future perhaps there needs to be a little bit more claim for humanity, a bit more philanthropy. The porcupine, I rather hoped that Nick would be here this afternoon because he always likes the porcupine being in, that it had failed in any form or degree to provide a practical solution of how best to house the poor. It's a hundred and twenty three units, it houses at most three hundred people at a time when twenty six, twenty seven thousand need to be rehoused. It is not even a drop in the ocean, but I suppose it's a statement of intent with the idea that the public, sorry, that the private sector would learn from this and move forward. The simple reality is that in the following seven years, despite offering land at less than fifty percent of market value, effectively subsidising land for private builders, not a single flat is built by the private sector at an affordable two shilling a week rent. And it is at that stage where traditional narratives of pre nineteen eighteen council housing, an honourable exception being Colin Pooley, to an extent, John Bowson as well, tend to then shift focus on Liverpool and leap to London and talk about the world's first municipal housing estate, the boundary estate in London. Liverpool is at that stage, after St Martin's Cottage is completely forgotten in most narratives. And what I'd like to do today, having spent four minutes longer than I planned to, will first be to say, but what happens next in Liverpool? And there's a confluence of political idealism within Liverpool alongside some national political developments, none of which are compulsory. But it nevertheless shows that Liverpool in this period is hugely dynamic on council housing. It presents a model for other cities and indeed other countries. And on the eve of the First World War, this tends to be forgotten, have actually constructed more council housing than anywhere else in the country, with the exception of London. The narrative, as I've said, tends to focus on London. And I really think Liverpool deserves more of a mention. National Acts, the eighteen seventy five Labour's Act, I don't particularly want to go through it, but it obviously allows councils to buy up areas, to clear them and rebuild, to get money from the local government board. Liverpool, between eighteen seventy five and nineteen fourteen, gets roughly six hundred thousand pounds to spend on clearance of dilapidated buildings. Liverpool, despite being the global first, is condemned specifically by name by the then Home Secretary in bringing in the eighteen seventy five Act, saying that the council has enabled a situation in which the working classes are condemned to see their children die like flies before them. It is a very public naming and shaming of Liverpool by the Home Secretary. I can't think of Playfair's first name, it's gone, it will come back to me. Also in the House of Commons suggests that the city has lost roughly four hundred thousand pounds in purely preventable unnecessary sickness because of the quality or lack thereof of housing for its poorest. The Liverpool Courier begins a major campaign to say that actually we need to improve the civic facilities. And that within that, the memorable line, the ground should be covered in dwellings after the model of St Martin's Cottages. A misnomer, obviously, given that they were tenements. But nevertheless, after St Martin's Cottages. And exactly, and in that period, you also get the founding of an insanitary property committee, which again is a first of local councils in eighteen eighty two, which is, which over the next twenty years looks at clearing particular areas, increasingly gets money from the local government board. But there are conditions attached and that gives rise to what actually then becomes from a single off experiment to an actual model. We tend to forget about these. And that's why I want to mention those and then go on to some of the later schemes. Eighteen seventy five, weeks after the city has been publicly castigated by the Home Secretary, the council decides it will take on four acres. It will clear it, it will cost roughly seventy five thousand pounds. And it will then make that land available to the private sector to build seventeen hundred. Dare I say, private sector developers trying arguably to wriggle out of their responsibilities, argue that they couldn't possibly make any money if it's to be seventeen hundred houses and therefore the commitment is reduced to one thousand one hundred and a small number of shops on the basis that the shops will make more money for the builders. That's eighteen seventy six. The council spends three and a half years advertising the land, cuts cuts the asking price by fifty percent and then by seventy five. And perhaps unsurprisingly, by March eighteen seventy nine, not a single tender has been received, not one. There are two small, I'll come on to them, tenders received for a handful of houses over the next couple of years, but in both instances, what the builders promised to build is not actually what they build and the rents that they promised to charge are not the rents that are actually charged. The council is left with with two options, having got the money, leave the site undeveloped, almost land hoard, do nothing with it. Or to argue that it should be allowed to have all purpose building. The eighteen seventy five Act had said you can clear land, but it must be developed for the working class. The council write in a series of letters begging the local government board to remove that requirement and just to allow, as it were, standard housing. The LGB stands its ground and says, absolutely not. The money, the loan for clearing the site is contingent upon alternative being rebuilt. And that therefore it would be competent, it would be a good idea for the council with the consent of the board to erect the dwellings. In other words, you've got the money, you can't find the private sector to do it, you will therefore do it yourself. Central government isn't quite directing the city council to do it, but it really is left in no uncertain terms. That if they want to have any further money for clearing in sanitary property throughout the centre of the city, something must be done. And the result of that is the Nashgrove Scheme of eighteen seventy nine. It actually takes until eighteen eighty two for them to get the tenders and discussion. And you will see it's a five story, this time without sellers, block development. Again, quite barrack like, reminds me of Glasgow Tenements of a similar period. Open in eighteen eighty five, I'm sure it's deliberate by the city council that it actually invites, he's been returned as Home Secretary, Richard Cross to open the new development, having castigated the council ten years earlier. It's two hundred and seventy two tenements around a courtyard, a caretaker's house because there is an absolute belief that those who are privileged enough to be afforded accommodation must be supervised and twelve ground floor shops. It is not an open free for all. This is a period of interviews to be allowed to actually take on board council housing. Strict regulations as to what is and what isn't allowed. And to give some idea as to what it then looks like, there aren't many pictures of it left. That is a picture from nineteen forty four, it actually had six air raid shelters within it. And its site along with juvenile dwellings is roughly where the best way blue building coming out of Queen's Tunnel is, I can't think of the road, but that's where it was. It's undoubtedly catering for the upper echelons of the working class, specially designed cook range, cast iron mantelpiece decorated with a coat of arms, the word artisan cast on the front, handsomely decorated entrance doorways, terracotta ornate balconies. Fantastic. In short, it's a standard that the private sector could not replicate. And the council only manages to afford it because it already actually owns the land. We also have to say, and dare I say this is always a case seemingly in planning, that it has taken ten years from the passing of an act and an idea to actually construct the housing. It's only two hundred and seventy two units again, progress is glacial. But concurrent to that, which I don't fully meet, this is readable, Arthur Forward, leader of the council, in commenting on the sort of a state of union of a city at a diocesan festival, states that there's fifteen thousand in sanitary houses that need to be removed. Months later, the Royal Commission on Housing the Working Class with the Prince of Wales as one of its lead members obviously begins to get the evidence to say more needs to be done to address in sanitary houses everywhere. Eighteen eighty three, eighteen eighty four, the worst two years of summer fevers for a generation, with three thousand cases and deaths at the same time. The city's P H O, who is French, talks of the city being in a worse position than the cholera smitten cities of India. Again, the suggestion that this is not acceptable for the second city of empire, that it is a disgrace. And an in sanitary property committee is, as I've said, established. It increasingly asks for more public money from the Public Works Loan, but that is contingent from eighteen seventy five onwards. In alternative accommodation, at an appropriate price, being made available to those who have been made destitute. And it must be erected either in situ or in the close vicinity. It's not an option to develop a site a mile and a halfway. If you are made destitute from a five minute walk from the docks, it is expected that you will be rehoused within a similar period. The experiment policy on this becomes a juvenile dwellings, agreed eighteen eighty five, opened in two phases, eighteen eighty eight to eighteen ninety, is another hundred and one tenements. This is the sort of end of phase two of Liverpool's experiment. It's become a policy that if we are going to clear, and we are going to clear fifteen thousand houses as a council, then we actually have to put something in their place. Still very basic, we can see obviously a shop at the bottom. We can see that compared to the earlier ones, the stairwell in the middle is no longer open to the elements, it's glazed. But it's three families sharing a single bathroom, a common laundry, common drying areas and so on. But it is undoubtedly a step forward from the very, very first ones. And for those of you who know the city well, that's where it was, sorry, I needed to point from this. The Queen's Way entrance takes, Scotland Road is to the left and the Queen's Way entrance tunnel and curve is really where Juvenile Street is. And you can also see on this one, Horatio Street at the top left is a nice little example of a post eighteen sixty four. Clearly would have been a court, but it's open at both ends. So you've got these three sort of types of housing in very close proximity. And all of eighty percent of the experiments between this period and the First World War are all in the northern quarter of the city. I've got a couple of slides of data, more just to illustrate the point, I'm not going to go through it in any detail. But you've obviously got the idea that there are tenement blocks, which we don't, notwithstanding the nineteen fifties, tower blocks and so on tend to associate with council housing now. And from juvenile dwellings up into the First World War, you begin to get the development more of what we would see as modern council housing of today. Just to put this into a sort of context of a city, a single table bizarrely took days to put together. We see from this that whilst the total number of houses demolished and constructed in the city is going up, so the city as a whole gets seven thousand six hundred and three houses constructed between eighteen eighty four and eighteen ninety five versus demolitions of five thousand eight hundred, a positive of seventeen hundred. Two of the poorest wards and two of the wards, and there is evidence of this, that are overwhelmingly Irish Catholic in terms of demographics, find an absolute decline in the number of houses that are built to replace those that are demolished. There's a shortfall of fifteen hundred. That's likely to be in the region, therefore four and a half thousand people who simply, within the area where they have been removed from, have nowhere to go. These will be available later, they took weeks. And I did refine this one this morning, that it just shows that where the Scotland Ward is, where Vauxhall is compared to the city centre. At the same time, the city council wanting to clear more in sanitary dwellings. We see that between the decennial totals of presentments, which is plans which are agreed by the local government board, as for the number of houses that can be demolished within particular wards. The majority of these are, as per this, in North Scotland, South Scotland, Vauxhall and to a limited extent Exchange goes up throughout the period, eighteen sixty four to eighteen seventy. Goes up throughout throughout the period, eighteen sixty four to eighteen seventy to eighteen seventy nine, the council. Agree and get funding to demolish five from the thirty six, that's more than doubled in the following decade and then to nearly four thousand. In the period eighteen ninety to eighteen ninety nine. Alas, of course, though they should be providing alternative housing, they don't provide it insufficient number. Two national pieces of legislation appeared during this latter period for housing the working classes Act eighteen ninety. Which allows any council, if it has the political will to do so, to demolish working class housing and rebuild. Specifically for the working class within its own boundaries, the eighteen ninety five Act. Allows them to to export and buy land extramurally. And to 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 send residents over the boundary. That doesn't happen in Liverpool in this period. Of six hundred and one new houses built eighteen eighty four to eighteen ninety five. Only nineteen in the two most overcrowded wards are actually at a rent that is less than four shillings and six. And that's a level of rent that is of itself nearly double. What was perceived to be the maximum level of rent that the most indigent of the working class could possibly afford. The result, of course, is is illegal subletting. And you get landlords, for instance, in the Great Homer Street area where Sainsbury's is now. But it's impossible to either retain or tame respectable class of tenants. It's noted that the same area has become a city of chip merchants, donkey owners, pigeon breeders and all kinds of ruffians. A a glorious bit of language, just to throw into an undergrad lecture. But the rent expert H E Williams, fantastic testimony, really, really interesting at the time. The city council, mindful of its obligations, having got four hundred plus thousand from from central government. And of the demolitions, reports in eighteen ninety five. That it effectively must do four things. On the first plot of land, that's convenient to do so, they they own most of that which they're demolishing. It should actually erect dwellings suitable for those who are presently living in courthouse. It's the first time that they specifically target a subclass. Sorry, subclass is wrong, subgrouping of the working class to say it's not just going to be for everybody, it's going to be specifically for those who are taken out of insanity courthouse. We must address them first. It also sets a design brief to say that they should either be self-contained houses. Or at most two or three stories in height, the idea of low rise, increased ventilation. A scaling back of higher five, six story tenements. That wherever dwellings are built, there must be a supervisor. And that as far as possible. Preference for housing must go to those who the council have itself made homeless. This is very much for beginning of a colleges for yes, another train. Of a social contract arguably between the council, between those that is actually thrown out and those that it needs to rehouse. I've put in yellow, it's targeted, it's low rise, it's supervision. And it's the council admitting that where it has created more of a problem, it must it must do something. The result of this is another hundred and twenty six houses. I'm going to go through the three very quick examples in in the last ten minutes or so. Purcell Gardens, part of Guildit Gardens, which is just down from from Bevington and Summer Seat. At the sort of back of L J M U. We see the city council's first two, three story, still relatively desolate, but a pedestrianized area. And I won't go into it today, but an interesting find is that it has always been assumed that Tyneside flats, Martin Daunton makes this point. Were only found in Tyneside, it's not actually true. Liverpool builds eighty eight of them, which. And there there appears to be twenty six of them in Rickmansworth, I don't know why they went to Rickmansworth. And I'm not quite sure why they came to Tyneside either, that's why they came to Merseyside either. It's a piece of archive work I want to continue to do. But you see in the development of these flats and tenements, far more street layout. Of of a terrace design of what we would come to begin to expect more of modern council housing. Not going to worry about the figures, merely than to say that between nineteen oh one and nineteen oh five. A vast escalation by the city council, nearly a thousand. Specifically for the working class and specifically for those who have been dispossessed and made homeless by the council's clearance schemes. New units are are built specifically for their accommodation, there's still a problem with rent, it's still too much. But you've gone from a hundred and twenty six units or thereabouts with the first scheme to nine hundred and ninety four being put together. In four years, probably therefore with a residency of greater, it's suggested of three thousand three hundred and twenty five, still a drop in the ocean. But but compare that to its original experiment fifteen years earlier, it's a huge movement forward. Two or three very, very quick examples, Holy Cross Place, there are more trains, it's been diversion this afternoon. The first piece of green infrastructure by the city council for housing, Holy Cross Place. There is now a tower block there, this was bombed in nineteen forty one. We we see effectively a a modern council townhouse, green infrastructure with 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 two planted trees. And and a safe pedestrianized area. Great Homer Street, this is exactly where Sainsbury's now is, and I I I can witter about this one for hours, I won't. It's the second largest development of the city in the immediate pre-war period, it is tenements. It's a vast scheme, but also notice there is a football pitch in the middle of it. To the left, there is a bandstand, there is there is deliberate pedestrianization. The provision of benches for for elderly residents. And this contrast with the narrative of saying that it is London that develops at council estates, this is clearly. An estate development and it's by Liverpool. And it is it is seen as a model example that is copied by Bradford and other cities as well. And in the sort of closing period just before the war, there are schemes of. Another, let me just add that one up, another thousand units in nineteen oh seven to nineteen oh nine. All of which are beginning to try to develop a far more integrated and better built environment model. Which takes me, and it is on the Mersey. The Civic Society's most at risk register to what I think is is the most glorious scheme that Liverpool had in the immediate pre-war period. Which is the Bevington Street area, which which many of you will know. It shows that rather than just buying up individual tracts of land, this is a more holistic approach to try to look at an entire area. Bevington Street is still there, the area in pink, I clearly played too much Monopoly when growing up, I took hours getting the little houses sorted. The key of this is that this is this is the largest improvement zone that the council decides to clear in the pre-war period. The geographic totality of it, it's it's twelve hundred acres or thereabouts, sorry, one thousand two hundred and fifty acres. Pink is is the externality, the improvement area. Transparent properties are ones it already owns, grey are the ones that it compulsorily purchases. Purple are commercial properties that it removes and does not replace with commercial properties. So it's it's a beginning of town planning zoning for housing. Yellow are public houses within that area, all of which are closed and not replaced. This is a dry teetotal, non-pub designated area to improve living conditions and so on. Notice however, that there are three green coloured pubs right next door, so so people can, as it were, escape from what will be the improvement scheme. Corporation dwellings that already exist are are the ones. Where where I've put red houses, and again, I'm afraid that those have been lost to Queen's Way Tunnel as well. But you've got Summer Street and Bevington, which still exist, and they're the oldest examples in the city that do still exist. The city council, if you were to compare the two maps, actually creates a designated recreation area in the middle. It's the first time that it actually takes away a street and says we're going to block off that street completely, we're going to re-redivert it. In order to enable this to be a pedestrianized area. And the result, alas, it is, in my opinion, one more arson attack away from demolition. Is the fantastic Bevington tenements. Opened in nineteen twelve, separate boys and girls playing areas. Bandstands. An international exhibition when they're opened to to show this scheme. Picture that is generally not seen, this is Limekiln Lane, and you can still map where the houses were with with the ones which. Are now in a dreadful state of repair at the top right. But critically, this scheme also brings in in nineteen twelve. Foreshadowing the picture that I started a lecture with of the homes fit for heroes is Summer Street. It's still there, it's nineteen twelve, and there you have what I would call. What we all see as standardized. Late nineteen tens, all the way through to twenties and thirties. Standard semi and terraces of 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 modern council housing. Our two Georgian ladies there to the left and a picture I took in about twenty nineteen. To the right. You have gone in Liverpool in a period of forty years from a one-off single experiment. Publicly shamed for not doing enough with national legislation, but also a reality, I think. Of beginning to say that if we wish to improve the city centre and housing conditions. Through demolishing the most insanity of properties, we must also build some as well, that is the major change. It's gone from something for the private sector to emulate to the council saying, well, actually the only organisation that has the money. And clout to do this is ourselves with with government funding over thirty five year loan periods. And you have throughout that eighteen sixty nine to nineteen sixteen period. Which are the last set of houses and they still exist as well. You have a total of actually twenty seven schemes in Liverpool, the world's first up to Sparling Street. In total, two thousand eight eight hundred and ninety five. Including seventy nine self-contained cottages, which in the interwar period will become the model of what is built thereafter, rather than tenements. So of course we go back to tenements in the city with the Braddocks and everything else. Netherfield Road in the fifties and sixties. Housing, we think, a population of about eleven thousand in total. With from the period nineteen oh one to nineteen sixteen, roughly. Two thousand two hundred houses opened. Still a drop in the ocean, but significantly more than thirty years beforehand. And that puts Liverpool second only to London, which with its far greater population, actually only man manages eleven and a half thousand. In the pre-war period, Liverpool very clearly therefore batting above its weight. And that, very briefly. I could have just done one of the schemes is is, I hope, a succinct overview of what I think the city council did in the period.